I'm going to call to order the council meeting of January 12th, starting with the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, with liberty and justice for all.
Jerry DeTulio.
Here.
Bud Starker.
Present.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Kristy Davis. Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Genevieve Wooden.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Are the changes to the minutes of December 1st and December 8th? During none, the minutes would be approved as presented. We have a proclamation, or really a presentation, from the Rotary Club, is that correct? We do? We do. Thank you.
Now, what it's for, I guess I should explain, right?
You should explain.
I should explain.
And give us your name and...
I'm Jim Nikat. I'm currently the president of the Rotary Club of Wheat Ridge, Colorado. You know, our club has, in the past, put together a thing called a Dog Leash Park and Public Art. That amount was fifteen thousand. I think this is one of the payments to help the program, do that program. That partnership with the city also started some time ago, when the construction of the recreation center was completed. The club came up with thirty-one thousand dollars to help outfit the community rooms in the rec center. So that contribution represents a portion of that support. Our fund also each year, in supporting the city and the community, provides four academic scholarships to four-year colleges, and then two to two-year colleges each year. We did contribute fifteen thousand to the construction of the artificial turf field at Wheat Ridge High School. And I didn't know this, because that was before my time, but it did happen. We do partner with other civic organizations on the Feed the Future program. Our contributions for that, just this last year, was, I think, five thousand dollars, so we do try to keep up with that. We outfitted the Wheat Ridge, had start building with the medical equipment for onsite health screening. And just recently, we've handed them a check for another twelve hundred dollars, so they could fund some iPads, that their people doing the work with the children are able to keep the records up to date quickly and actively, so to speak. Not loud enough? Okay, I will get louder. Says here, "Over the past five years, we've purchased more than fifteen hundred dollars of equipment for the recreation center." I'm not aware of what we purchased, but I know we do have a, there's a multi-meter projector, I believe, that was provided by our club. And there's also a PC we have that's available to do some work there. Senior Resource Center. The Senior Resource Center is kind of a hand in glove, because one of my members is the person, is kind of a managing person there. And we will, we are currently working on putting together fifty boxes of basically care kits for the people that live there that are on limited social security incomes. That's going to happen, and we moved this from doing stuff for Christmas, because a lot of people do stuff for Christmas, we moved that to the fourteenth of February, which is more like a Valentine's projection, production. And then, and we do, well, I attended a meeting with this, maybe you've heard of the Arvada Wheat Ridge Service Ambassador for Youth? They also do scholarships. I got to sit in part of that just a week ago, where they provide six more scholarships. So there's a lot of money going into scholarships. And then, when the Home and Garden Show closes out, just got a letter today, we're asked then to take the flowers they have in that, and distribute those to the nursing homes in the area. So we're preparing to do that. And we did, I'm not sure about that. I'm not sure if people know about the Joe Pitt Coffee Shop at Wheat Ridge High? Says we sponsored that. Anyway, I'm not sure I know about it. And then, we do send students to a week-long leadership program each year for the thing called the Rover Youth Leaders Assembly. And we simply support the farm, we did support the Farmers' Five Thousand just this first year, time this last year. And we simply appreciate our partnership with the city.
And we appreciate yours, for sure.
Well, thank you.
This check is for a thousand dollars, it is...
Oh, free.
For... Oh, my.
Otherwise...
I thought I got two, but I guess I got... Thank you very much, Jim, and as well. I'd say it's a pretty strong community uplift.
It's an arm and a half, yeah.
It is. Thank you again. Okay. We will now move on to citizens' right to speak. This would be on matters that are not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. And we request that you sign the public roster. We have several items here. This is, once again, items that are not on tonight's agenda. So may I have, well, I'll try and calm off Thomas Lundie?
Members of the Wheat Ridge City Council, I have come to compliment and commend the Wheat Ridge... Thomas Lundie, last name L-U-N-D-Y, and that's at 3500 Allison Street. Members of the Wheat Ridge City Council, I have come to compliment and commend the Wheat Ridge Planning Commission on their considered and courageous decision to reject the resolution to the effect that the proposed development on the site at the southwest corner of 38th Avenue and Wattsworth Boulevard is in general adherence to the city's comprehensive plan envisioned Wheat Ridge. The decision to reject this plan occurred at the Planning Commission meeting on December 18th, 2014. The video may be viewed at the Wheat Ridge Channel Eight YouTube channel. And the video itself is Wheat Ridge Planning Commission 121814. I do hope the council feels the same way as I do about their judgment. The deficiency of this plan has been noted often in many settings. At the urban renewal meeting of November 20th, 2014, the proposal development was announced by the citizens of Wheat Ridge as outdated in concept. An uncreative response to Wheat Ridge's permissive and progressive mixed-use zoning regulations, uninspired in design, a means to bring a Wal-Mart neighborhood grocery to Wheat Ridge, marred by insufficient articulation with RTD, unbalanced regard to its phased development by leaving all residential construction until the last phase, nothing like a proper walkable city center, a reason not to locate to Wheat Ridge, and unworthy of TIF financial support by the city. Members of the urban renewal board itself noted the design elements of the proposed plan, signage, building facades, and so on, complied with the requirements of the envisioned Wheat Ridge plan, but only technically and minimally. These points were reinforced at the Planning Commission meeting of December 18th, 2014, in a detailed refutation of the claims by the developers. Further criticism was leveled at the developers for their lack of care in their application. And Alan Bucknum, who voted yes, as a matter of fact, was troubled by the many unanswered questions posed by the filing. Chairman Ann Brinkman noted, "This is the first time I've ever received a packet where everything was true negatives. There's not enough information given about the property, except for some slides that even, that we saw were not even in our packet, per se. I don't feel I have enough information to prove to me that the property and plan meets the comprehensive plan." This sentiment was echoed by Scott Orm. Again, I would urge my fellow citizens to view the video of the meeting, Wheat Ridge Channel Eight YouTube channel, Wheat Ridge Planning Commission 121814. Soon, the city council will consider a substantial modification of the Wattsworth Boulevard corridor redevelopment plan to allow the use of TIF financing related to property and sales tax for the property in question. The project filing today stands exactly as it stood on December 18th. No flaws repaired, no questions answered, no clarification provided. Logic demands that the provision of substantial modifications of the Wattsworth Boulevard corridor and proposal TIF be rejected. I urge the elected officials of the council not to disregard the considered and entirely just decision of the Planning Commission in rejecting the development.
Thank you, Mr. Lundie. That's the end of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And would the next person come in? Please give your name and address.
Let me set my timer. My name is John Clark. I'm a proud candidate for, oh, excuse me, a resident of District Four here in Wheat Ridge. And I'll be honest, I hope everybody's having a great new year. I usually have enough time to come up with a couple speaking points, talking points, and something that I need to talk about with the weather and everything else in the holidays. It's been pretty hectic, and I'm running a little behind. So I started, and this is what I came up with. I have two points, but I didn't go anywhere with them. But then I got to thinking on the way over here, they really don't need a lot of explanation. The first one is defunding Wheat Ridge 2020. I think that speaks for itself. I mean, we've said it all before. You know, they're well overdue. They're doing things that was not the original intent. They're almost twice as long as we were going to fund them, so on, so on, and so on. So that would be my first point, to defund Wheat Ridge 2020. My second one would be to widen 38th Avenue. Two or three months ago, on November 4th, there was an election, and sixty percent of the people, the electorate in Wheat Ridge, voted not to accept that vision, the vision of a narrow street, of a thirty-five-foot wide street. It's black and white. Widen the street. Hopefully, come spring, we'll get rid of the planners, and we can widen the street. So, other than that, I see that shows how far behind I've been, because apparently marijuana's on the issue. And I'm usually tasked with bringing the little red stop signs, and I failed. So if you indulge me, just imagine like half the audience with little red stop signs on. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Vivian Voss, V-O-S, 6920 West 47th Place. Greetings and Happy New Year. I wish to bring to your attention two items. Number one, I belong to an issue committee that was involved with Wheat Ridge issues in 2014. Our committee has been accused of lying to citizens and falsifying numbers. I do not lie, and I do not associate with known liars. Myself and those involved with the issue committee attend city council meetings, city study session meetings, planning commission meetings, and urban renewal authority meetings. We also attend school neighborhood meetings, city economic neighborhood meetings, and any other neighborhood meetings that we are aware of. There will be more issues in 2015, and we'll be attending those gatherings as well. These meetings, the spoken word at these meetings, and the minutes from these meetings are where we get our information and our numbers. Not only is the issue committee falsely accused, but it has been told to me that another person active on the issue committee has been emailed excessively, publicly and privately, by one person who will not let the issue die. This has become a possible harassment issue. So I would challenge that as we begin a new year, that we make it a happy one, and we leave 2014 behind us. 2015 hopes to be a year of new and better. The second item that I have is that I have been told that I expressed a recall vote for Kristy Davis. I have never uttered those words until now. Not in any context have I voiced those words. Let all of us not speak for other individuals. If you have an issue or item to discuss, stand before me and talk to me. Please do not stand behind me and talk about me. Let's make it a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council, Jennifer Shepherd, 7 Twilight Drive. And I just wanted to encourage everyone to attend the Community Awareness Drug Training Event tomorrow evening, seven o'clock at Wheat Ridge High School. And it will be the West Metro Drug Task Force, and it will be a panel discussion about how drugs affect adolescent development. The more we can educate ourselves, the better we can spread this education throughout our community, and empower not just our youth, but also our young adults and our adults to make healthy choices regarding drug use. And I also wanted to thank you, the Wheat Ridge, thanks to the Wheat Ridge Educational Alliance for getting this information out there and co-sponsoring this event. All of the Friday folders throughout the Wheat Ridge schools received the flyer, so we look forward to a good attendance tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Tolman, 4735 Reed Street. I just wanted to bring forward that on Kipling and about 49th, there's going to be a new Vitamin Cottage Natural Grocery Store, who's coming in without a TIF. And I just really appreciate that they're doing that, and wanted that in the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, please.
Hi, Jennifer Yates, 3700 Miller Street. I just want to thank the City of Wheat Ridge Council, Building, Police Department, everybody, for finally closing down Three Kings. I received a phone call a few weeks ago from a gentleman that lives behind the place saying that they actually had a bus in the back where they would party and sleep and puke through, into the wee hours of the night. So, good job in getting that closed up. Really appreciate that. On 2A and 2B, I'm just going to quickly voice why I voted the way I did, which, sorry, Mr. Clark, not going to agree with me. But on 2A, I voted yes, because I do think that we need to invest in our infrastructure and things that need to be fixed. Although I didn't really pay attention to where the money was coming from, but I do think it's important that we invest in Wheat Ridge. On 2B, I voted no, because I think it was too much of an investment for such a small piece of Wheat Ridge. That does not mean that I don't like what's been done down there, aside from maybe the silly back-end parking, but the rest of it, it looks beautiful down there. So I partly don't want to spend the money to undo anything, but it is beautiful down there. So hopefully, we can keep that and just go forward in maybe slightly different direction in a different way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Hultin, and that's spelled H-U-L-T-I-N. And I live at 4690 Balsam Street. And I'm here tonight to share with council and anyone who's watching or listening that we're really excited to introduce the 2015 Wheaties Academy. It's a first-year inaugural grassroots leadership academy that is being, it's put together by citizen leaders, myself and a couple of other residents, and we're being supported by Wheat Ridge 2020 and the city of Wheat Ridge. I also want to recognize three council people who've stepped up in support, Councilwoman DeTulio, Councilwoman Wooden, and Councilwoman Pond. This, the Wheaties Academy is an eight-month experience in which we will be providing the inspiration and the skills for sixteen Wheat Ridge community members, and that can be residents and business owners, to learn how to turn their inspiration and their ideas into action. It will include four really fun mobile sessions, where we're being co-hosted by other grassroots organizations to learn how they did what they do. And then, we'll have a retreat. And the outcome of the retreat will be two projects that the participants will then have some funding and mentoring to implement over the summer. And then, we'll gather one more time in October to celebrate our successes. So I encourage all of you guys to let your constituents and your circles know about it. I will leave some flyers and applications at the back. We're accepting applications through January 27th. And we have a really heavy emphasis on looking for diversity of members in our community. So I encourage everyone to look. We've got a great website with more information, and I hope it's exciting. And I hope, whether you do the academy or not, that you follow the stories and the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. I see three more speakers are listed. Are they not present or have chosen otherwise?
Thank you. Name is Charlie Myers, 3620 Otis Street, District One. And to save time, I concur with Mr. Tom Lundie. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? We have two more here, but...
Hi, Maureen Daly, D-A-L-Y, 3620 Otis. And I too concur with Mr. Lundie, and appreciate your consideration of the Planning Commission's thoughts on the development plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Louise Canjar, C-A-N-J-A-R, 3055 Webster. And I too confirm the words of Tom Lundie, and hope that you take into consideration the results of the most recent Planning Commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Boy, you're all just sort of hanging out there.
Hi, I'm Mary Dropnick. I live at 3695 Holland Street. I am a resident of Wheat Ridge since I've been sixteen years old. My parents moved us here from North Denver. And I love Wheat Ridge. I will never move from Wheat Ridge unless something, some other circumstances happen. But my wish for Wheat Ridge is to get a tree recycling program going and a leaf recycling program going. I live on an area where I have tons of trees. I had over thirty bags, and nowhere in Wheat Ridge can I deliver them. I called Denver, who wouldn't, you know, you have to show an ID, and same with Arvada. Luckily, I was able to talk the Arvada guy into letting me dump my leaves there. And so I would really appreciate it if Wheat Ridge can get us going on a tree and leaf recycling program. Because again, you know, all that mulching that gets done, and they turn it back into the environment and make it look even more pretty. So I would please have you consider that. Yes. D-R-O-B-N-I-C-K. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more speakers? Okay, we're going to move on. This would be the approval of the agenda, and I understand we have a change in the agenda. We're pulling an item number three, I believe. I need a motion to change the agenda, to pull item, it's actually the consent agenda, so it's item three, 1C. Thank you. 1C. Mr. DeTulio is going to make that motion for me?
Madam Mayor, I move to remove item 1C from the agenda.
Have a second? Seconded by Mr. Urban. Please pull the council.
Who was the second, please?
Me.
Oh, okay. Tim and Tracy, can you vote again, please? Motion carries eight zero.
Ms. Davis, could you go ahead and read the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Consent agenda, motion is 1A, motion to encumber funds for bus shelter cleaning and snow removal services, bus bench refuse collection, and cleaning services in 2015 in a total amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand. 1C, motion to encumber funds for on-call storm sewer cleaning and on-call traffic signal repair services in a total not to exceed eighty-five thousand. We've pulled 1C. 1D, motion to approve payment for sales tax increment shareback for November of fiscal year 2014 from the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Town Center project in the amount of thirty-five thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars to renew Wheat Ridge. And 1E, motion to adopt the 2015 city council meeting calendar.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Starker seconded, and I believe we can pull the council.
Did you make a motion?
I hope they were all kind of in a motion.
Oh, I didn't mean to vote no. Sorry, I'm in a new seat. I'm not used to it. Sorry. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Motion carries 8-0.
Oh, interesting. Good. Okay. All right. Okay. All right, thank you. Moving on to item number two. It's going to be... No, we'll get that. It'll come back in. Yeah. Okay, we're familiar with that. Little rustling of papers up here. Let's move on to item number two. Mr. Pond, could you read that for us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 16-2014, an ordinance approving rezoning of property located generally at 3400 Youngfield Street from neighborhood commercial, restricted commercial, and Commercial One to planned commercial development and for approval of an outline development plan, case number WZ-14-09, Applewood Village Shopping Center.
Okay, thank you. Let me get my... This is a, I do need, first of all, let me start with an ordinance number on this item.
Did you open the public hearing?
I will do that as soon as I've got a number.
Okay. This is going to be ordinance number 1562.
Thank you. I'm now going to open the public hearing. And I need to swear in all who plan to testify. Will there be anybody in the audience speaking? Yes, please stand up if you're going to testify or speak to this. Thank you. Raise your right hand and say, "I swear," or agree to, "I swear to tell the whole truth in this matter." And just answer by saying, "I do."
I do.
Thank you.
I swear I practiced this before the meeting started. There it goes.
Oh, that's...
Oh, thank you. It's off now, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, for the record. Meredith Record, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, I am here to present case number WZ-14-09, which is a request for approval of a zone change from NCRCC1 and PCD to planned commercial development and for approval of an outline development plan for the Applewood Shopping Center located generally at 3400 Youngfield. I'd like to enter into the record the case file and packet materials and the contents of this digital presentation, and also establish jurisdiction. The property is within the City of Wheat Ridge, and all proper posting, noticing, and publishing requirements have been met, so council does have jurisdiction here, this case. So, before we get into the nuts and bolts of the actual case itself, I'd like to talk a little bit about the process that we're going through. The city's plan development process is a two-step process. The first step is for the zone change to a planned development district and then approval of an outline development plan, or what we call the ODP. The ODP sets allowed uses and development standards for the property and gives sort of a general concept layout of the site showing general parking areas, buildings, landscaping, and so on. Because this is a zone change, both Planning Commission and City Council have to hear the case. Planning Commission gives a recommendation to City Council. With this process, there was a pre-application neighborhood meeting held on August 4th of last, I guess, last summer. And once this is approved, if it's approved, the next step would be the specific development plan and plat, which is the second step of the process, and that focuses more on the details of the development, such as specific landscaping and final drainage reports, street improvements, and so forth. And I would point out that new SDP approvals require review only by the Planning Commission. So, with that, let's get on to the discussion. So, this image shows the Applewood Shopping Center. North is to the top with 38th Avenue up here on the northern end, Youngfield Street on the west, and then 32nd Avenue on the south. And you can see the parcel, the primary parcel designated in blue with some other red colorings. Those red colorings are the pieces that are going to be added to the existing shopping center plan development. So, Applewood Village is about 35 acres in size, and again, has bordered by 38th Avenue on the north, low-density residential neighborhoods to the north and east, 32nd Avenue to the south, and then Youngfield on the west with I-70 just beyond that. It was initially developed in the early, in the early to mid-'60s, and it is comprised of numerous buildings and parcels, and it is the city's largest commercial center. Some of the tenants that operate out of this include King Supers, Walmart, Wells Fargo Bank, Applejack Liquor, and lots of other smaller tenants as well. The shopping center is located in a busy commercial corridor and has easy access from I-70 through the 32nd Avenue, I-70 on and off ramps. And I would note that both 32nd and 38th are classified as minor arterials and carry also a lot of vehicles per day. The location is also a very popular stop for travelers coming to and from the mountains as they can fulfill most of their shopping needs just in one stop. So, there's a lot of large buses, a very busy shopping center. Now, the northern portion of the property is on planned commercial development, but the southern portion, which includes these parcels down here at the bottom, has a mix of zoning, including restricted commercial, neighborhood commercial, Commercial One, and also some planned developments. And while the center has been through a series of amendments that have allowed us to redevelop certain pads, there has never been an overall unifying ODP document. And so, that's what we're doing tonight, is to bring new parcels in and establish a zoning document that then we can move forward with some redevelopment, primarily on the southern end of the site. This is, again, another image that shows the boundaries of the shopping center in red. And again, north is to the top, so we've got 38th Avenue up at the top, 32nd down on the very end, and Youngfield at I-70 beyond on the west. The surrounding properties include a variety of uses. On the east and north sides of the center are residential neighborhoods, generally zoned R1A for single-family development. Across 32nd Avenue are a mix of homes and businesses, and then abiding the property to the west, again, is Youngfield with I-70 belong beyond that. The majority of the parcels in the center are included in the PCD application, except for a single parcel right here, I believe it's addressed as 3500 Youngfield, and that has the Qdoba restaurant and a mattress room. That's the only parcel within this super block that's not included as part of the planned development, and it is on C1. The majority of the pending redevelopment will occur on the south side, down in this location, and it is putting zoning on properties that will be acquired by the applicant, and their addresses variously, 3210 Youngfield, 12755 West 32nd, and 12525 West 32nd. So, let's look quickly at some slides. I started on the north end. Here, I'm looking southeast towards the Walmart building right here. This is 38th Avenue in the foreground, and this is the primary, one of the primary entrances into the shopping center. This is on Youngfield. This is the building I was talking about that's not included, 3500 Youngfield. It does have the Qdoba and a mattress room retail store in it. This is one of the entrance drives between Qdoba and Wells Fargo. We are expecting some new redevelopment of the old Holly West La Fonda Restaurant into a new drive-through facility for the Wells Fargo Bank that was recently built. This is that new bank building finished a couple of years ago. This is one of the major entrances into the shopping center from Youngfield. It is a signalized entrance. This is the existing drive-through for Wells Fargo. Here, I'm standing at 32nd and Youngfield, looking north. You can see the street improvements, which were recently completed by the city and the state, so drastic improvement in the functioning of that intersection. Here, I'm standing on 32nd Avenue on the south side, looking north. This red building in the background is Chili's. The two parcels in front of it used to, until very recently, have a Conoco gas station that was closed up, and then another retail strip that was also demolished. The old Wells Fargo Bank building. This is the primary entrance to 30, or to the shopping center from 32nd Avenue. This is one of the new parcels for acquisition. It used to be overflow parking for the bank building. And this is standing on Wright Court, looking back towards what we used to call the Old Chicago Building. And this is one of those areas that is prime for redevelopment. And then this is in the Wright Court cul-de-sac, looking towards the, I guess it would be the northeast, towards some of the residential properties that are directly above the property. So, included in your packet were two pages of an outline development plan. This is the first page. I like to call this the declaration page, and it has, it has some of the mandatory things. We always require the legal description, all the signature blocks, so on and so forth. It also contains some of the development standards and the permitted uses in the shopping center. Currently permitted uses include all C1 uses, and because that's how we have administered it, anything that has a drive-through facility has to go through a special use permit. Well, what we've done with this document is we've expanded those allowed uses and have included the ability to approve those drive-through uses as uses by right through an administrative process. So, anything that would have a drive-through, like a bank, or a fast-food restaurant, or a fueling station, would be an administrative review. We would still have to go through a specific development plan process that would require a public hearing in front of City Council, so we still have those controls and the ability to review the specific development. Let's see, it also includes development standards. So, as an example, the ODP indicates that any new construction adjacent to a public street has a 0- to 20-foot build-to-line, so it's pushed up against the street to try to accommodate that pedestrian scale. There's a maximum of 35% building coverage, 55% hard surfaces, and 10% landscape coverage with a maximum building height of 50 feet. Overall parking is provided at a rate of four spaces per 1,000 square feet, which is our shopping center standard. And finally, architectural will be required to follow the requirements of the Architectural and Site Design Manual. One of the areas of potential concern for staff is the adjacency to the residential development. You saw in the photos how close those homes, I guess, just to the northeast of Wright Court are, and there's also quite a bit of grade change between down there and the top of that, the level of where the Old Chicago Building is right now. And so, what we've recommended is that there be some language included that upon review by staff and Planning Commission, that we be able to take into consideration those low-density residential properties and to allow some use limitations, perhaps some lighting limitations and business hour limitations to try to protect and mitigate some of the impacts that could occur from those two adjacent uses. This is the second page of the development plan, and it's the graphic portion. It was a little bit tricky trying to come up with this because not only are we trying to reflect the existing conditions and make it work for what's already out there, but also to accommodate new development. So, again, we have existing conditions, including building locations, parking and circulation and access points. We also have used this document to designate areas of potential development. Now, this is oriented a little bit different. North this time is over on the left-hand side, so 38th Avenue would be here with Youngfield over at this location, 32nd Avenue on the south. Let's see, existing structures are shown with striping, with existing circulation and parking areas in what we call half-tone. Curb cuts that are existing are designated with arrows. The redevelopment areas, which are primarily along the south side, are being shown with a light gray sort of overlay color, so these development sites down here on the very south end. And those include properties addressed as 3298 Youngfield, also the new Wells Fargo Bank location on Youngfield as well. There are numerous accesses into the site. Again, the shopping center has developed over time sort of in a piecemeal fashion, so there's a lot of curb cuts and kind of some confusing traffic circulation in the area. So, what we've done is we've shown the existing curb cuts, access points into the shopping center primarily from 32nd and 38th Avenue on the south and north, and then also from that signalized intersection, or excuse me, signalized access that we saw in the photo right at this location. A lot of the individual parcels as well have had their own access points, so sometimes it can be pretty tricky driving around out there. What we wanted to point out is that staff is considering these access points as existing conditions and not a guarantee that with redevelopment, those existing access points would be allowed to remain. We would like to reserve the right to evaluate the areas of redevelopment with potential consolidation of access points and circulation areas, and we have included a specific condition in your recommended motion with some language we'd like to have included on that to ensure that we've got the ability to make those changes. A small strip of land is located on the very north end of 12525 West 32nd. This is the old parking lot that was used by Wells Fargo. This strip of land located right in this location is not owned by the shopping center, and we think it's logical that it be obtained and then brought in just so we've got a nice, clean slate for redevelopment. The owners of the shopping center had made attempts to purchase it without any luck, and so Renewal Wheat Ridge is pursuing acquisition of this piece. I would point out that it's five feet by 155 feet, and obviously, it's not buildable, and there was an appraisal that occurred, and the appraisal value came out to be less than $1,000. City Council did authorize Renewal Wheat Ridge staff to go ahead and try to acquire that acquisition of the parcel and incorporate that into the overall development plan. We've also made a condition that because we're one of the, Renewal Wheat Ridge is one of the, per se, property owners, that they will have a signature block on the first page of the document. So, that should be all taken care of. When city staff gets an application for a zone change, there are specific criteria that we have to look at in the zoning code when we do our evaluation. I think that there are two important ones relating to this particular case. One of the requirements is compliance with guiding documents that govern the city and our policies. And in this case, there are four documents that pertain to the property. The first one is the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, which was adopted in 2005. This was a document that directed the city to be open for business, that we needed revitalization of underutilized commercial properties and including more households to support increased tax generating uses. The second one is the I-70 Kipling Urban Renewal Plan, and again, this gave a recommendation to revitalize blighted areas and to utilize some of our administrative applications for redevelopment. And Urban Renewal did look at this and concluded that the application is consistent with the Urban Renewal Plan. And the final one, or excuse me, the third one is the city's Economic Development Strategy, which points out goals of creating new employment opportunities, retaining and attracting retail growth, and rehabbing underutilized retail areas. The final one is Envision Wheat Ridge, which is the city's comprehensive plan adopted in 2009. This is an excerpt of the map, the structure plan from the revital, or excuse me, from Envision Wheat Ridge, and the property is located in here. What those different colors and symbols stand for is the desire for mixed-use commercial in this area, also that it's a community... in this area, also that it's a community commercial center, and that there are primary commercial corridors, as well as a gateway into the city here at Thirty Second and I-70. In review of all the goals and objectives, staff has concluded that there is consistency with all those plans. The other piece I wanted to talk about as far as criteria are changed conditions in the area. Commercial development in this I-70 and Youngfield corridor continues to intensify, and you can see some of the statistics I included. Traffic, West Thirty Second Avenue carries over 11,000 cars, vehicles per day, 7,400 on Thirty Eighth Avenue. Youngfield carries 22,800 with I-70 at 84,000 vehicle trips per day. There have been infrastructure improvements in the recent years, including the Youngfield Highway 58 improvements, the West Fortyth Avenue underpass, and more recently, the Thirty Second Avenue improvements, which included street widening, new traffic signals, and so on. Also, we're seeing new investment area, new investment in the area, including the first bank building, that I know that's probably about five years old, but still, that trend continues for new facade improvements by private property owners and so on. And again, we feel that the changed conditions also support the need for the zone change and consolidation of the planned commercial development on the property. All of the responding referral agencies have indicated they can serve the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense as a part of any redevelopment opportunities in the area. Planning Commission reviewed this at a public hearing held at the beginning of November. They did give a recommendation of approval with the reasons that are listed. I believe that this is the same motion that's included in your council action form with the same conditions. And finally, staff is giving a recommendation of approval. Again, those are the same four conditions, including in both the planning commission recommendation and also in the council motion, in addition to the four conditions we've recommended. So that does conclude staff comments, and I would be happy to try to answer questions.
Council have questions, if Meredith? Thank you. Okay, do we have the applicant? Would you have, would you care to speak?
I'm the regional officer for Regency Centers. Our address is 8480 East Orchard Road in Greenwood Village, Colorado. Mayor, council members, thank you very much for hearing our request this evening. And Meredith, thank you. You did a superb job describing the mechanics of the request, and so I won't try not to repeat any of that. And really, my intent is to highlight some of the key points and add some color to our strategy moving forward. First off, a little bit about our company. We're a publicly traded real estate investment trust, Regency Centers. We've operated for over 50 years. We own about 328 shopping centers across the United States. 86% of our portfolio are anchored developments, and a majority of those anchors are grocery stores. That's our core business and investment strategy. Our average grocery store sales across our portfolio exceeds $575 a square foot, which is really good volume. And as you guys know, in Wheat Ridge, this shopping center generates very strong sales, and we're very proud of it. Our average occupancy across the country is 95%. We dipped in the recession. We've been working hard for the last several years to get occupancy back up, and it's through initiatives and projects like this where we're reinvesting capital on our existing assets to try and improve those and get that occupancy level up. Just shift to our site plan. This is our merchandising plan. Over on the right, we've got the list of existing tenants, and then above that, you see the list of vacancies. The vacant spaces are identified in orange on this merchandising plan. And to give a little history, this is not how we would develop a shopping center today. This is what shopping centers look like that develop through fractured ownership, piecemeal over many, many years. And so it's a great shopping center, but we believe it could be a lot better. And I've been working hard over the last several years to acquire parcels within the shopping center that are contiguous to our ownership, that we did not own. The building labeled A, B, C, D, E, F, that shop building in the center, I used to call it the hole in the donut, because there was a private landowner that owned that parcel and that building in the center of our shopping center. And what that caused us was some, we had a legal agreement between us and them, but it caused some challenges with respect to our vision of redeveloping the center and improving access and leaseability. We acquired that a year and a half ago. We recently acquired the vacant parcels that Meredith showed on the photographs at the corner of Youngfield and Thirty Second Avenue, the old gas station and strip building. Cabela's formed a metro district with Coors and had acquired that, and we ended up purchasing that building from them as well, and demolished those to get it ready for future development. And we're under contract to acquire the Wells Fargo Building, identified as NAP-1, and also the parking lot, which is just shown as a green block along Wright Court. Both of those are currently owned by Wells Fargo, and they vacated Building 17, where they used to hold their back office. That lease naturally expired. We did a ground lease, and they constructed a new building up front to Building 40, and we've reached an agreement where they will relocate their drive-through use behind that, and we will be able to acquire that pad up front and the pad in the back. So all this to say, the zoning at the property was not consistent, and for us to achieve that future vision, we needed to go through this first step. We worked with staff to identify the best zoning structure to enable us to go to the next step with the SDP and present the details of what we'd like to do. No pun intended. I'll add some color to the ODP. This is the same drawing that Meredith showed with some colors, and I think it reads a little bit better. The gray areas are really our, the core areas that we're focused on today. Not that these areas all will develop on the same timeframe or redevelop, but there are areas where we're studying. We do have submittals in place for certain pieces of it that are ahead of others, the hard corner. We've got some user interest, and we've been through, we've submitted for some site-specific plans. We'll be coming in with some more detail there soon. In the back, near the light blue area, is our next priority. We've got some users interested in that as well. And then the blue area is intended to be a regional, semi-regional detention area. If you look at the entire south of the property, I'll call it eight or 10 acres of the property, there are some existing drainage issues that cause, especially this time of year, on the north sides of buildings, a hazard with ice, and there's no access from the front to the back of the center. We hope to be able to regrade and install better drainage systems and a detention pond in the back to solve some of those problems. So we really needed the rezoning as a broad template to be able to work all these details out, and we look forward to submitting that detailed information in the future. Let me just hit the last aerial, and this is, what I wanted to talk about here is that we are sensitive to the single-family residential adjacent to our property. These are our patrons. We take seriously what their concerns are, and especially the staff's direction regarding what the appearance of that development could look like. We feel like the, some of these buildings are structurally obsolete, and that a well-designed, well-landscaped detention pond in this area will actually create a better buffer than exists there today with that vacant building. So anyway, it kind of concludes my request. If there was a detailed point that you didn't hear me address, I've got my team here of technical people that are willing to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Damarath. And does anyone on council wish to ask any questions? Nope? Okay, I'm going to call for anybody in the audience, public comment regarding this property. I don't believe I have anybody signed up, but I did want to announce that. I can close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Thank you. I move to approve Council Bill Number 16-2014, an ordinance approving the rezoning of a property located generally at 3400 Youngfield Street from neighborhood commercial, restricted commercial, and commercial one to planned commercial development, and for approval of an outline development plan on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication for the following reasons. One, city council has conducted a proper public hearing meeting. All public notice requirements as required by Section 26-109 of the Code of Laws. Two, the required rezoning has been reviewed by the planning commission, which has forwarded its recommendation. Three, the required rezoning has been found to comply with the criteria for review in Section 26-112-E and 260-303-D of the Code of Laws, with the following conditions. One, a note be added that bicycle parking should be consistent with Section 26-501.E. dot four of the Zoning and Development Code. Two, language be added to the plan that development in the southeast corner of the area include consideration for upgraded vertical landscaping, reduction of lighting at night and hours of operation limitations. Three, public works recommend, recommended language regarding access to be included on Sheet Two of the ODP document. And four, a signature block for the Economic Development Manager must be included on the face of the ODP document, as the city will be a cooperating property owner.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Item number three, Ms. Langworthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 17-2014, an ordinance vacating any interest of the city in a portion of 44th Avenue. At issue, an ordinance vacating any interest of the city in certain land adjacent to and potentially a part of the 44th Avenue right-of-way.
Madam Mayor, if I could. If I could speak to that agenda item. As indicated, it vacates a portion of the 44th Avenue right-of-way to facilitate the conveyance of the Friddale School property by the, by the authority, the housing authority. It really just kind of cleans up that legal description, because it's a vacation that requires an ordinance under our system. But vacation ordinances also require review and recommendation by the planning commission. And the planning commission doesn't meet until January the 15th, later on this week. So my request, and the motion is in the packet, I was thinking that perhaps we open the hearing, take any testimony, close the hearing, continue it just for action. That actually isn't the motion. The motion's just continue the hearing, and I actually am okay with that, because since we don't have anyone here, I don't believe to speak on it tonight. It's possible we might in a couple of weeks. I don't want to close off the opportunity for people to speak. I doubt there will be any. So I'm recommending that you go ahead and open the hearing. No one has signed up. Take any testimony that you have, and then take the motion to continue the hearing to the January 26th meeting.
Are you suggesting, since we don't have anybody here, to not, whether, you know, I can offer to public testimony, but we don't have anybody here that's signed up?
We don't have anyone here, and I feel a little reluctant to close the hearing and continue for action, and it's on the agenda, and if somebody shows up next time and wants to speak, you know, I think it's probably better practice that we just take the motion that's in the packet, after you've opened the hearing and asked for anyone to speak.
The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Hearing none? I will close the public hearing, and a motion is in order?
You won't close the hearing?
No, 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 don't close it.
You'll just ask for a motion.
Ask, oh.
We're not closing the hearing. We're asking for a motion.
Oh, because we're going to continue it?
To continue it, yeah.
Right.
Anybody want to make the motion in the packet?
I move to continue the hearing on Council Bill Number 17-2014, an ordinance vacating any interest held by the city in a portion of 44th Avenue for final action at the regularly scheduled council-city meeting of January 26, 2015.
Second. Motion has been made to continue this item to the January 20, well, the next meeting. Okay. All in favor? Please vote. January 26.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, moving on to item number four, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council Bill Number 01-2015, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 4295 Harland Street from restricted commercial to mixed-use neighborhood, case number WZ-14-11 Kaplan. At issue, the applicant's requesting approval of the zone change from restricted commercial to mixed-use neighborhood for the property located at 4295 Harland. The proposed rezoning area includes one parcel, which is approximately .21 acres. The purpose of the zone change is to expand possible uses of the property to include the option of converting the existing structure back to residential occupancy. At this time, the applicant is not proposing any new development or modifications to the site. If the property is redeveloped in the future, under proposed MUN zoning, an administrative site plan review would be required to confirm that the proposed development meets the standards of the mixed-use zoning district.
This is an item, this is a first reading, so we can go ahead and proceed forward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
May I have a motion?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 01-2015, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 4295 Harland Street from restricted commercial to mixed-use neighborhood on first reading, ordered published, public hearing set for Monday, February 9th, 2015, at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
May I have a second?
Second.
We've had a motion and a second? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Moving on to item number five. Once again, this is an ordinance for first reading, so we won't be taking public comment or a staff report. Could I please have the ordinance read? Ms. Woodin?
This is Council Bill Number 02-2015, an ordinance amending Chapters 5, 11, and 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the regulation of medical marijuana establishments and retail marijuana establishments. At issue, since August of 2014, the city has been operating under a temporary moratorium on marijuana-related businesses. The moratorium was imposed to permit the city council time to study and evaluate the city's existing local regulations governing such businesses. The council has completed its evaluation and directed the preparation of this ordinance that addresses the following main points. Establish a cap on the maximum number of marijuana-related businesses allowed in the city. Designate all storefront operations where the public may purchase marijuana as a special use in the C1 Zone District. Limit cultivation activities to a minimum, maximum of 5,000 square feet. Impose a separation requirement 1,000 feet from storefront operations to the Wheat Ridge Recreation Center and improved city parks. And incorporate certain state regulations concerning signage and establish a review process for such signage. Should I read the rest of it? That's up to you. Okay. I am going to read the rest of it at that point. Additionally, the city council directed that a separate ordinance be prepared that would permit existing legal non-conforming marijuana businesses to co-locate. Medical marijuana businesses could include retail marijuana in their existing business operations. Retail marijuana businesses could include medical marijuana in their existing business operations. Those provisions are contained in a separate council bill. Finally, the council directed staff to develop a mechanism under which the council is notified of the following events concerning marijuana-related businesses. Number one, application is made for a new special use permit. And two, application is made to modify or transfer an existing licensed business. Staff has developed a proposed mechanism- Staff has developed a proposed mechanism further described below and determined that it does not require modification of the code or inclusion in this ordinance. The ordinance also contains a recommended clarification in the zoning use chart that was not previously discussed by council. Under the city's existing regulations, cultivation operations are permitted in only two scenarios. One, contiguous to an associated storefront business. And two, contiguous to an associated manufacturing business. As noted in the second bullet point above, council directed that all storefront operations be designated as special uses in the C-one zone district. Council did not discuss whether a cultivation operation that is associated with a storefront in the C-one zone district should also be designated as a special use. This ordinance provides that a cultivation operation will mirror the zoning designation of its associated principal use. The result is that when a cultivation operation is associated with a storefront in the C-one zone district, it will be reviewed as a special use. The same process used to review the associated store. When a cultivation operation is associated with a manufacturer in any zone district or with a storefront in the IE zone district, it will be reviewed as a permitted use. The same process used to review the associated manufacturer or store. Staff believes this clarification of the zoning designation of cultivation operations is consistent with the council's policy directives otherwise reflected in the ordinance. Staff also believes these provisions would be logical and intuitive for both the public and city decision-makers. Staff would appreciate council discussion on this topic to ensure that it is consistent with the goals of this ordinance.
Thank you. As I announced before, this is first reading, so we will not be taking public comment or having a staff report on this item. That will occur during the public hearing, which is January, set for January twenty-sixth of this year. So I'm looking for a motion on this.
I move to approve Council Bill number zero two dash two zero one five, amending chapters five, eleven, and twenty-six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the regulation of medical and retail marijuana establishments on first reading. Order it published, public hearing set for Monday, January twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, at seven PM in city council chambers, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
May I have a second?
Second.
And may we have a vote? Discussion?
Yes. I move to amend Council Bill number two, series two thousand and fifteen, to renumber section fourteen as section fifteen and to add a new section fourteen to read. Section fourteen, moratorium repealed. The temporary moratorium on certain city approvals necessary to establish and operate marijuana establishments in the city originally imposed by ordinance number one five five four on August eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, and as extended by ordinance number one five six zero on October twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen, is hereby repealed.
May I have a second?
Second.
Amendment?
Second.
The amendment has been seconded. May I have a vote on the amendment?
Motion carries eight zero.
Are there any further discussion or amendments? Then we can go ahead and vote on the amendment, on the motion as amended.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, let's move on to item number six. And let me see here. I believe that is Mr. Fitzgerald.
Right. Item number six is Council Bill number oh three dash two fifteen, an ordinance amending sections eleven dash three oh five, eleven dash four one five, and eleven dash four one six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the collection of medic- co-location of medical marijuana establishments and retail marijuana establishments. The issue, the ordinance was prepared in conjunction with the ordinance number oh two dash two, two thousand and fifteen, amending the city's existing regulations concerning marijuana-related businesses. As described in the request for city council action for that ordinance, the city has been operating under a temporary moratorium on marijuana-related businesses since August of two thousand and fourteen. The moratorium was imposed to permit the city council time to study and evaluate the city's existing local regulations governing such businesses. The council has completed its evaluation and directed the preparation of two ordinances. One ordinance amending various aspects of licensing and zoning, and one ordinance addressing only the issues of how existing legal nonconforming marijuana businesses may co-locate. Co-location is the process under which a medical marijuana business may add retail marijuana to its existing business operation, and a retail marijuana business may add medical marijuana to its existing business operation. This ordinance addresses the co-location issue. Under existing code language, a legal nonconforming marijuana business may not obtain a city license to add a co-located facility to its existing premises if the premise is in violation of distance requirements or zone district limitations at the time co-location is desired. For example, if existing medical marijuana store is located less than a thousand feet from a city park, because it was located prior to the establishment of that distance requirement, under existing code language, the medical marijuana store may not add retail marijuana to its inventory and sell both types of marijuana. This ordinance would permit such a medical marijuana store to add and sell retail marijuana. As with any nonconforming use, if this example, exampleed marijuana store wanted to expand its building in order to add retail marijuana to its inventory, such an alteration to the nonconforming use would not be permitted. Nonconforming use, uses, including marijuana businesses, may not generally alter or expand without coming into compliance with all code requirements. The co-location permitted by this ordinance therefore allows the co-location of nonconforming marijuana businesses only to the extent that such co-location does not involve expansion of the business or modification of the site. Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
Yes. Let me once again announce, because this is first reading, we won't be taking any staff comments or public comments. And we are ready for a motion, although I believe we have an amendment.
Yes, there's an amendment. Mr. Dahl, do you want to speak to this or to the amendment?
Yes, I should say that I have drafted an amendment that corrects a technical drafting issue in this ordinance, and it's been handed out. I think someone will probably offer it after the motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading is offered. It really adds the word marijuana after retail in one section and after medical in the other. And the effect of that is to make certain that the, you get the benefit of the definition of retail marijuana establishment and medical marijuana establishment. Those are both defined elsewhere in the code. And they, in those definitions, those definitions include manufacturing facilities. And that isn't immediately obvious, as you can tell from the ordinance. We, as written, it sort of seems as if it's just talking about storefronts. But if we add these words, it's, and it was our intention, and I talked with Carmen about this, it allows us to access the definition, which is broad enough and includes manufacturing facilities, and that obviously was one of the reasons for this separate ordinance. So I recommend the amendment after you take the motion to approve the ordinance.
And we're ready for the motion?
Well, okay, I'll, yeah, I thought. You're gonna do the amendment? Okay, I'll read the motion. Okay. I move to approve Council Bill oh three twenty dash fifteen, on first reading, order it published, public hearing set for Monday, January twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, at seven PM in the city council chambers, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second. Who was that?
Bud.
Second.
Bud, was, was Mr. Starber?
I move to amend Council Bill number three, series two thousand and fifteen, as follows. In section one, insert the word marijuana in the third line of section eleven dash three oh five G, following the word retail. In section three, insert the word marijuana in the second line of section eleven dash four one six H, following the word medical.
Second.
Thank you. We've had a second. May I have a vote on the amendment, please?
Is that correct?
Motion carries seven to one, with Councilmember Wooden voting no.
And let's move on to the, a motion now, as amended. Please pull, please pull the council.
Oh, okay, now vote. I'm sorry.
I don't like my new seat.
Same thing.
Motion carries six to two, with Councilmembers Wooden and Urban voting no.
Okay, let's move on to item number seven. Mr. Pondigan.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce, introduce a motion to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance to sunset the Animal Welfare and Control Commission. Is the motion in order?
Yes. Did you want to read? It is in order.
Thank you. I move to direct city attorney to draft an ordinance to sunset the Animal Welfare and Control Commission.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second? If you had a first and a second, please pull the, is there any discussion? Or can we pull the council? Please pull the council.
Oh, no, that wasn't.
I didn't clear. I'm sorry. Motion carries eight zero.
Item number eight, Mr. DeTulio.
Thank you. Item number eight is a motion to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance amending the city code to allow the use of electric security fences on commercial property.
I'll second that.
Oh, I didn't make a motion.
Do we have a second? Okay, do we have discussion?
Urban?
Mr. Urban has seconded the motion.
I didn't make a motion, yeah. I just introduced it.
Okay.
I move to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance to amend city code to allow the use of electric security fences on commercial property.
That is a motion.
I'll second that.
And it's been seconded? Okay. Do we have discussion, or are we ready to pull?
Discussion.
Discussion?
I really don't think this is something we should be bringing forward at this time. We've offered to the business owner a compromise, and the school district is still against this. It is, it borders a large portion of the school. We talked to the school, some school district people today, and they are still against it. And I believe we should delay this and continue looking for other solutions for the business owner. I completely understand the business owner's problem and that they're looking for a solution to this, but an electric fence bordering a school, I don't believe is the correct solution.
Mr. DeTulio?
Just for the record, this was brought forth because a large business in the city of Wheat Ridge, Kettles and Campers, is having, he had estimated about a hundred thousand dollars a year in theft. And the fence, even though it's an electric security fence, does not kill anybody. It doesn't hurt anybody. It basically gives you a shock like you're grabbing a battery cable. And really, the fact of the matter is, even though this has been brought forth proactively for one business, I see as we move forward that this technology is out there. The city of Denver allows it, the city of Aurora allows it, and so I would assume that other businesses in the area, especially if they're in the outer areas of the city, would like to use this in the future, especially in the industrial areas where there's less population. So I looked at the bigger picture holistically, that this would benefit the current business, but also benefit businesses in the future. That's why I wanted it brought forth. Thank you.
Mr. Sutton, Starber, Mr. Starber.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to be voting no on this, this proposal. This, this feature, these electric fences, may or may not be a feature that we want to have in our city code and in our city. But I think it would be more appropriate to, not to do this on the dais with a motion to approve at this time or to draft an ordinance. I think it would be more germane that if, if this is something we want to do, that we take it to a study session, we understand what, what possible ramifications there are, what our contemporaries and other jurisdictions might, might feel about this type of an ordinance, what the safety concerns are, what the benefits are. And I think we need much more study on this before we move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
I'll also be voting no on this. This particular business was given an opportunity to respond to this matter and did not do so. And I think we would welcome any solution on their part that would take into account the danger to schoolchildren and to the motel that also borders this property. And I would note that in their original testimony, they testified that this was an industrial strength electric fence. Now, what that means, I don't know, but that's, that was their testimony. So I, I, I think this is a danger to kids, or this could be a danger to kids and to the people who are at the motel on Kipling.
Madam Mayor.
I have Mr. Pondigan, it's raised his hand.
I have just a couple of questions for staff. Can you help me understand, as city code is currently constructed, what are the limitations that are, that are stated as it relates to electric security fences on commercial property?
Municipal code, chapter twenty-six zoning, as it pertains to fences, is silent to electric fences. It doesn't list them as a type of permitted fences. It lists things like chain link, wood, wrought iron, does not address electric fences. There is a section under the permitted fences that are listed in that section of the code, twenty-six, six oh three. Later in that same section of the code, there's a list of prohibited fences, and that is not a specific list, but it's a section regarding prohibited fences. And what it basically says is any, any fence that, at the determination of the director of public works, the chief building official, or the police chief, would determine to create an unsafe situation, those are by definition prohibited. So essentially, what, what we've done at this point is, is make a determination under, under what conditions an electric fence could be deemed safe and therefore not prohibited. And hence, that was amongst other things, the reason why we determined that a three-foot separation from the perimeter fence was required.
And then, so, so it's staff, staff, staff's interpretation of the code sections with the applicant and any, any conditions to determine that. If, if you then make the determination, are there any other avenues for the applicant to seek approval for, for the fence?
They've received approval of administrative variance. The variance was actually for the, the height. They wanted a nine-foot fence. They actually initially wanted the ten-foot fence. We can, I can, as community development director, grant variance is up to fifty percent of a development standard. So the, the general height maximum for fences in the city is six feet. I was able to review and make a determination of approval of a variance for a nine-foot fence, subject to the conditions related to the thirty-six inch setback and other things related to signing it in terms of dangerous situation. They had a ten-day window after that determination was granted, that variance was granted and at some point in November, I forget the exact date, to appeal that determination to the Board of Adjustment. So at this point, if their only appeal process, and I'll defer to Jerry on any additional discussion, I guess, but would be probably upon making a new application. The, the, the current variance is approved for six months, so it's valid for six months, and they need to pull a building permit within that timeframe for it to be valid.
Okay.
That's right. They essentially have, they have a permit, which they've chosen not to appeal the conditions of the BOA. But that means that permit remains issued. It's administrative permit, and it's good for that six months. Obviously, you need a building permit to, to, to act, to construct what's allowed by the administrative permit. And that timeframe is running for them to choose whether or not they want to build what has been permitted.
And again, the, the option then to appeal to the Board of Adjustment is open or closed?
No, that's closed. That was a ten-day window. Chose not to act on that. If they want to get in front of the BOA, the only way to do that would be to reapply to the staff for a permit, get it approved, then exercise the appeal in the ten days.
Right. So that could be done.
That, that could be done. It's a little convoluted, but sure, could be done.
That, that could be done, it's a little, uh, convoluted, but sure, could be done if they wanted to find themselves in front of the BOA.
All right, so, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Davis?
I just have one question, so I know we've gave, we've given them what they need to do, but have we, I mean, again, I'd like to study it further in a study session, I know they've come, but is there some type of compromise we've looked at? I mean, I know there was a question that all of a sudden we're taking now three foot, three feet from their area, is there something that, from the school side, that we could, you know, look at, you know, are they able to put signage up to, to warn children and, and, and those types of things? I just, I just wonder if there's a compromise, I mean, I, I, I also agree that I think this business has had some vandalism and, and those types of things, that I just wish we could find more of a happy medium than, than some of the restraints we've put on them.
Yeah, I guess I, I thought we did, um, I mean, we, you know, we, we had discussed this issue of a three-foot separation early on in the process, uh, and it was my understanding that the, the applicant and the fence company had agreed to that three-foot separation as not, not their perfect, I guess, they wanted something closer. You know, we've done a little bit of research based on some of the information they provided, and I think, as you, you look at some of the, uh, the national standards for installing these, and one of the things that, that is recommended in those national standards is that there be a minimum amount of space there, and, and actually, one of them, uh, one such professional organization defines it as one meter, uh, so that someone does not basically get trapped in that, that void space between the perimeter fence and the electric fence, and not have a means of escape, right, not being able to avoid continual contact with the electric, electrified fence. So, we continue to think that the three feet, and it seems to be justified by the international standards, is a good distance, uh, and allows them to have what we otherwise think would be an unsafe fence for our community, and that was made, uh, at the determination of the police chief and the chief building official, uh, and in consultation with the fire marshal. You know, the, the issue with the school district really came out, uh, later in the process, when, uh, we sent the, the variance application out on referral, uh, to surrounding property owners and other interested parties. Uh, their initial determination was that it, there was under no circumstance that they would find this acceptable. Uh, we worked with them, worked back and forth to find a, a solution that, whereby they, the, the applicant was not going to electrify the portion adjacent to the school, and under that, uh, circumstance, the school district agreed that they would find that to be acceptable, not ideal, but acceptable. So, uh, we certainly have tried to work proactively with the property owner, the business owner, uh, and the fence company to find that common ground. Uh, we're certainly open to continuing to work with them, but we, uh, certainly have made our best effort to date.
Mr. DeTulio?
So I just, this, I think this makes my point, we have three staff people making this determination with no code, no guidance in the code, and so I would think that we would still want to see this ordinance in front of us, then make a decision about it having something in front of us, rather than saying, let's study it, study it, study it, when you can't study it, when there's nothing to look at. So even if, uh, Kettleson Campers goes about and builds their fence, we, we're gonna have this issue again with some other business in the future, so I still think it makes sense to have an ordinance come forth, you can look at it at a study session, and at that point, if it doesn't make any sense, don't, uh, don't move it forward, but I don't know what you're gonna study if there's nothing to study. I mean, if we don't have an ordinance in front of us to look at it, and, uh, even the applicant had supplied an ordinance that Denver used, so, uh, we can look at Denver's ordinance and have that in the packet to, uh, Mr. Dahl could look at that to use forward, but I think having, it's silent in the code, which is, I guess, a decision that's, the city attorney and staff has made, that if it's not in the code, it's illegal, which, um, kind of, I think it's a whole different way of looking at things, but if it's not in the code, it's illegal in the city of Wheat Ridge, so whatever you're, they're looking at, we, we had to go through a bunch of code amendments to allow gardens in the city of Wheat Ridge and commercial gardens, because that was illegal, because it wasn't defined in our code, so it's the same thing with the electric fence, which is a security fence, which is a national standard type of fence. So I would hope that you at least support it, to have the city attorney draft the ordinance, bring it forth to a study session, and then go from there.
Are we ready then for the motion? Do you want to go ahead and make your motion, or was that it?
Actually, the motion's already there.
The motions are, are, that's right, uh, that's right, we're under discussion, so it's really, it's, uh, if there's no further discussion, let's go ahead with our vote.
Motion fails three to five with council members Wooden, Langworthy, Fitzgerald, Pond, and Starker voting no.
Thank you, I believe that concludes our meeting for this evening. Let's go ahead and, uh, let me get to the front here. I believe it's time for officials' reports. City managers matters.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, just one quick announcement, um, Jefferson County's, um, school district, um, is having, um, one more, um, public, uh, comments, uh, meeting on their Jefferson area innovation plan, um, that is, there's actually one tonight, which I think went to eight, but the last one is this Thursday, January fifteenth, at Lumberg Elementary, from eight to ten AM, so this is to provide opportunities for citizens who want to comment on the Jefferson area innovation plan, um, that plan can be found on the school district's website, um, which is, uh, talks about some, some shifting of, of schools and, and grades that will impact Wheat Ridge schools, so if it's something you're interested in, you may want to take a look at the Jefferson County School District's website and, and attend that meeting, thanks.
City attorney matters.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
City clerk?
As of, um, one item, I would like to suggest that you, um, might want to add to a study session, a discussion about your public comment for, um, public hearings. Um, I've been, um, asked about, excuse me, it happened tonight, about public comment, um, on first reading, and in your, I've pored over your council rules, and the, according to the council rules, um, the, the first reading is a place for amendments, but if you don't allow public comment, you are effectively eliminating the possibility of there being any amendment that is driven from the public. Um, now, a, a citizen might say, well, if I can't talk about it, um, under the agenda item, then I'll talk about it under public comment, but they can't actually do that because the public comment is limited to items that are not on the agenda. So you end up with a catch twenty-two, they can't talk about it at the beginning of the evening, and then they can't talk at a, talk about it at first reading. So what they're, what the citizens are, um, relegated to, if you will, um, is they can come and make comments at second reading, but the chances of getting an amendment at second reading, you know, are slim and none. The, there's never any collective will to, to, uh, change something that's already printed in your packet, that's just the way life is, it always has been, and it probably always will be. But your rules do say about that first reading is the time for amendments, eh, as evidenced, you did that this evening. But, um, I, I really think you ought to talk about this, to allow the, the possibility for the public, um, to comment and offer, um, ideas for amendments, whether they happen or not, um, at first reading, because what you're, i- it, it doesn't feel very good to the public to be completely shut out at first reading, so I just wanted to share that feeling with you that that's out there, and you can do with it what you want.
Thank you, uh, did you want to respond to that? Certainly.
So, I was on city council when that amendment was passed, and the problem we had before is that we had people coming in on first reading and second reading, and they, basically, they had to make time and, uh, to come in to speak twice, first and second reading, and the whole idea was, is that the public hearing is where everybody can come at the same time and hear the same thing one time, rather than piecemealing it at first reading and second, and I think you were on city council when we changed that rule with Vance Edwards and a few other people, but the idea was, public comment, and the public hearing was where everybody had a chance to speak at the same time on the same issue. Now, I would disagree that amendments aren't made on, under public hearing and second reading, maybe in certain instances, but I've seen a lot of changes at public hearing on second reading, so I would just, I would not want to change the rules, because it's, it's not fair for someone to come in and speak on first reading and then second reading, and then somebody else comes in just for second reading, and they're trying to make their comments, but there's already been discussion, it gets muddied. Now, everybody knows, second reading is when everybody has a chance to speak, and council can be swayed to make amendments, I've seen them in the past, so I think it's much to do over nothing, over maybe one or two controversial issues, but it could get worse if someone comes in on first, they convince the council, then someone comes on second reading, and then council has to backtrack because of, of erroneous or incorrect information heard at first reading. The amendments was there for, for type of housekeeping amendments like we did tonight, adding a few words or changing a few words, so I wouldn't want to change the council rules at this point.
Any other comment on that? Okay, let's move on, then, do you want to, uh, would you like to say something else since we're at, uh, council comments at this time?
Happy New Year, it's gonna be a frisky two thousand and fifteen.
Ms. Davis?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
Your turn.
I think tonight, Madam Mayor, thank you.
You know, uh, I'd love to say nothing, so we can go on and get out of here, but there is one thing I want to say, uh, I did a ride along last week with one of our, uh, police officers, uh, and it, it is quite an education to do that, it really makes you appreciate the, the kind of, what these people go through, who are on duty for eight, nine hours, whatever it is, that they are in tune to, to what is going on, where they're watching every direction, uh, they, first of all, they come in the, and I rode with, uh, Sheena, I believe was her name? And she's about my size, and she's got twenty, twenty-five pounds around her waist, and she carries two briefcases full of notebooks, uh, they're, they're watching what's going on, they're responding to calls as quickly as possible, it makes me say, we really, uh, need to, um, be thankful we have such good officers, they use a lot of equipment, they need a lot of equipment, and, uh, I, I'm glad to have them, and I think that, uh, when they, when they need a pay raise, I'm glad that we have been able to do that, because we have really good people out there, so, that's all, and I, I really encourage the council to, to go on one of those ride-alongs, it's worth your time. Okay.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing tonight.
Just a, I guess I, just a quick reminder that next Monday is Martin Luther King Day, and we won't be here, but there are many people who will be celebrating, um, I, I, someone who's supported peace in our, in our country and on our future, and right now, I think our country needs peace more than ever, so, I guess I would just, you know, take a day, take a moment to think about all the things that have happened, and, and try to bring a little peace to your world.
And I just want to tell everyone about two school events, Compass Montessori is hosting a free showing of the documentary Race to Nor, Race to Nowhere, The Dark Side of America's Achievement Culture, with a discussion to follow, and that's tomorrow night, Tuesday, the thirteenth, at six-thirty at the Compass Auditorium, and that is at their Golden location. And then our only private school in Wheat Ridge, um, Alpine Valley School, is also hosting an event this week on the fifteenth at seven o'clock, and it is called Every Child a Pioneer, An Educational Expert to Speak About That School's Philosophy, so those are two events, and they are on a new Facebook page, uh, the Wheat Ridge Education Alliance, if you'd like more information, thanks.
I believe that's it, the meeting is adjourned, good night.